Which is audience participation. So this is the time for members of the community to speak on any item that is not on the agenda as a public hearing or going to be on a public hearing in the future. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Please make sure you watch the light on the podium. When it turns yellow, you'll need to wrap up your comments. When it turns red, your time is up and I'll have to interrupt you as your three minutes are over. When you are called, those in person, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and those who indicated on the webinar registration that you wish to speak will be allowed to unmute and speak when the clerk calls your name. Ms. Rosamond, is there anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we have seven individuals in person and 11 online. The first person in person is Roberta Ayala, Ward 2.
Good evening, City Council. Tonight, I'd like to read for you all a letter that was sent to you all last Friday with the subject line "Action Requested: Municipal Campaign Finance Reform." Our official committee, Thornton Voters for Fair Elections, had over 55 people sign on this letter as of today. We have not gotten any replies from council members except for Councilmember Bigelow, Councilmember Marvin, and Councilmember Hanson. The letter states, "The undersigned Thornton residents write today regarding our vision for comprehensive campaign finance reform for our municipal elections and to express our support for an ordinance or change to the city charter that will enhance a functioning, transparent, and trustworthy government through these means. As you have run for office yourself, you know that currently there are very few limitations on campaign finance here in the city. This results in a system dominated by big money and special interests that produces an unrepresentative selection of wealthy, well-connected people running for office and leads to government politics that fail to reflect the needs of everyday people. Ensuring that political leaders represent the interests of not just the wealthy and the powerful, but all Thornton residents require reducing the power of big money, empowering small donors, and enhancing access to reporting to help residents make well-informed decisions when voting to minimize the appearance of corruption. In the current system, local candidates generally raise significantly less than those running for state or federal office. So just a few large checks in a local election can have a bigger impact than they might in a state or federal election, and the role of big money in our elections is a barrier for regular people to run for office. Thornton has an opportunity to follow the lead of many of our nearby cities to put into place a well-designed and comprehensive reforms that allow our city to move forward with a true sense of democracy and accountability. These reforms can achieve that goal by creating a broader, more diverse, small donor base, enabling diverse candidates to run and win competitive campaigns, and amplifying the voices of people of color in low- and moderate-income communities. Increasing transparency and disclosure of who is contributing and diminishing the role of large concentrated campaign contributions. America's democracy works best when everyone has a voice, and our campaign finance system should reflect that. We ask that an ordinance include the following: reasonable contribution limits, earlier, more frequent reporting, add teeth-to-enforcement policies, ban corporate contributions, require better disclosure for dark money, create a public financing of campaigns, and more transparent disclaimers on electioneering and greater transparency on election spending." I'm over my time right now, so I'll leave it at that. We are a growing committee of concerned residents, and we will continue to write emails with all of our participants, blind carbon copy to each email. We look forward to your reply.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. Would you please call the next person?
Mary Payne, Ward 3.
Would you please call the next person?
John Alge, Ward 2.
Hey, hey. So, good evening, Mayor Coleman, members of council and staff. Before I make my comments, today does mark the one-year anniversary of the tragic events at the table Mesa King Supers. So our continued prayers, thoughts, and condolences go to the families and also our neighbors in the city of Boulder and Boulder County. My comments this evening are my own personal views, and they do not reflect upon any board, commission, service club, or nonprofit. My wife Diane and I have been Thornton residents for three and a half years. Though we both love it here, one of my concerns is the lack of transparency by some members of our community. One of the sources of this is campaign contributions, specifically those from special interests and developers. Our city charter mentions campaign contributions and that candidates must abide by state law and disclosure. In a nutshell, though, our city ordinance concerning campaign contributions needs to be amended, as it was written previous to the implementation of mail-in voting in the state of Colorado over a decade ago. Currently, by the time candidates are required to disclose campaign contributions, ballots have already been dropped and voters begin casting and turning in their ballots, which could make a huge difference in outcome of a close race. The city of Thornton needs campaign finance reforms so that all of its residents are able to properly research prospective candidates prior to casting and dropping their ballots. We need more frequent reporting on contributions. As a community leader and volunteer, it is essential to me that all residents have the ability to make their voices heard regardless of affiliation. Then our municipal government will fully be able to serve all of us, not just those with means and influence. I thank all of you for your consideration and for your time and for all that you do. Good night.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Jackie Phillips, Ward 1.
Would you please call the next person?
Jessica Troy, Ward 3.
Good evening, council members. I am here tonight to discuss the cost of gas and how planning decisions that this council has made to make this city so car-dependent is resulting in significant financial burden for working-class people in our city. Communities that allow for a variety of transportation options for residents not only give working people options to save money during hard times such as these, but also result in healthier, happier residents, fewer injuries and crashes, stronger economies, more opportunities for small businesses, and cleaner neighborhoods. But our city council continuously ignores this, and Thornton residents are paying the price. I can't help but wonder if the reason why is because more than half of you had your oversized campaigns funded primarily by developers and oil and gas companies. And now those special interests seem to be making our planning and zoning decisions. We need campaign finance reforms so that special interests are buying our elections and our town. The people of Thornton deserve options for getting around their town and through hard times, and they deserve to know who is buying their representatives. Personally, I would have loved to have ridden my bike here tonight, but I did not have that option because it's not safe to ride your bike here after dark. And I have three kids that I would really like to get home to tonight. It doesn't have to be unsafe to ride a bike in Thornton. These are deliberate planning decisions that we have made, and we could make different decisions, and I hope that we will in the future because the people of Thornton really need their options. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the next person?
Brian Ludnick, 9932 Williams Street.
Would you please call the next person?
Derek Haynes, no address was provided.
Hi, good evening. Hopefully you can see and hear me. My name is Dr. Derek Haynes, and I have lived in Thornton for 20 years. I am a proud member of Ward 2. I'm entrepreneur, I have two businesses here, and I'm also grandfather. And it's from that perspective that I just want to spend a few minutes to talk to you about campaign finance reform. I've got about eight years before my grandson turns 18, and it's important for me to do everything I can between now and then to make sure Thornton is the best it can be. You know, I grew up in Denver, and Denver was a great place. But for the past 20 years, I've been here in Thornton, and I really think when you compare Thornton to other places, you know, this is one of the cities that I wouldn't want to be anywhere else but here. And I think, you know, we all can agree, you know, if we take time to really think about Thornton, Thornton is a good place, but it can be better. I think that if, you know, if we're willing to work, we can have better roads, better parks, better education system, better services for our residents, and a better police force. And I think we can get there. But for me, what's important in order for us to get there is for me to really have a good idea of who's funding the leaders that we've elected. So I really think that we need campaign finance reform because I really don't have an idea of who really has the ear of those that are representing me. So I think it's time for us to take a look at the city constitution and make some hard decisions so that we can do things to make things better for all of our residents here. So I'm looking forward to being a partner with you to do what we need to do to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the next person?
Kate Mia, no address was provided.
Thank you for giving me the time to address council this evening. As with multiple speakers, I'm here to ask you to start the discussions around campaign finance reform for our city. Some of the largest cities in Colorado have already adopted campaign finance reform, to name a few, Fort Collins, Boulder, and Denver. In those cities and many others, elected officials like yourself have made the conscientious decision to embrace campaign finance reform by adopting ordinances that celebrate fairness, transparency, and equity. Currently, there are no limits for campaign contributions in the city of Thornton. Literally, if a person or an organization wanted to give a candidate $1 million, they could do so, which I think we can all agree is ludicrous. Our city is not for sale, and we need to do everything to make sure that people do not think our seats on council are for sale. Speaking in hyperbole only highlights the issue. There have been times that this council has been accused of making decisions that are not for the benefit of the community but for the benefit or hubris of an individual council member. By adopting campaign finance reform with reasonable limits, some of these concerns can be alleviated with transparency. Another issue that comes with campaign finance reform is the reporting dates. Currently, ballots go out before the first reporting deadline. Voters have a right to know who they are voting for and who is supporting that particular candidate. If we are ever going to get past the constant bickering and feelings of betrayal ever present on this council, we have to be more open and more honest as a community. Council members, mayor, you are being judged by your actions. I hope that the actions you take regarding campaign finance reform put you in a good light. Truth be told, when you look bad, the city looks bad. When you make the right decisions and speak out for the rights of your citizens, you look good, and therefore you make the rest of the city look good. Leadership is not easy, but this decision should be. Remember, the biggest appeal to moving the reporting date to allow voters to do their research and imposing reasonable limits broadcasts a commitment to more transparency, accountability, and honesty. The more I talk to residents, the more I see that this is something that is wanted from people of all walks of life. A group of concerned voters have been meeting to discuss campaign finance reform. I am one of those members, and I'd like to offer my time to answer your questions, should you have any. This is a nonpartisan issue that only stands to prove your commitment and assurance to the voters of this community that you support fair elections and not the corrupting influences of big money and politics in elections. Partnering with your community members is essential to your role as elected officials in our city. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the next person?
Melissa Rosky, 4232 East 133rd Place.
Hello? I'm Melissa Rosky at 4232 East 133rd Place. I'm in Ward 3. I've been a resident in Thornton for almost six years, having grown up in neighboring Broomfield. I agree with some of the statements of some of the other people prior to me here that we have a lot of great things here in Thornton. There's so much of it I haven't even explored yet myself. And there are some things that are at least headed in the right direction, even if they're not where a city of our size and established history should be, including our parks, our music series, our recreation department. There are a lot of really great things. I would definitely second the problems with safe bicycling and non-automobile transportation options that Jessica Troy spoke about. And in fact, I just filled out a survey a few days ago that Broomfield sent out about this, asking about people's opinions on the bike lane situation and what they would like to see in Broomfield to make things even better. And I would say that their situation with bike lanes is already ahead of ours. So as a stakeholder in that city as well, as somebody who goes there a lot for recreation, not because we don't have recreation here, but there's certain things I do that are only there, I filled out that survey. I would love to see something like that here with the city actually committed to making those changes. So this is only one thing in which other nearby cities have already instituted reforms that they've shown to work, and what I'm referring to here is campaign financing reform. Some of the candidates in those other nearby cities that have already instituted such reform and public financing have, and followed the associated restrictions and compliance required to obtain the public financing, have actually earned more money for their campaigns than the ones who chose not to follow those guidelines. Let's be clear, they earned honest money for their campaigns in this manner. Money that doesn't make it questionable where the loyalties of the council members lie and who might be whispering in their ears against the needs and desires of their constituents who might have elected them without really knowing the full situation, given the timing of reporting requirements, and given the general lack of awareness that most people have in our community about the lack of donor limitations and other restrictions that they probably think are actually in place. This creates an inaccessibility for average or disadvantaged citizens who aren't well-connected to run. We have plenty of well-qualified people who don't consider running for office because they know it's likely an insurmountable feat to outcompete those receiving dark money, corporate money, out-of-state money that has no business in our local municipal elections. We can allow more diversity on council that is actually representative of our entire city, not just the well-off, in socioeconomic terms as well as other demographics. I received no less than five fancy color-printed mailers from one of my ward candidates.
And Ms. Rosky, I'm going to have to interrupt you because your time is up.
Okay. I'd just like to say this is supposed to be a democracy, not a button paid for by special interests authoritarian regime that it is becoming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the next person?
Anthony Accello, 15014 Columbine Street. And I don't see him online, so if you would raise his hand or press star nine, can unmute him? Amira Lucas, no address was provided.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Amira Salt Lucas, and I am here representing myself tonight as a Ward 1 member. I am a mother of a child who is visually impaired. I am the president of the Colorado Parents of Blind Children Division through the National Federation of the Blind of Colorado, and I sit on the board for the National Organization of Parents of Blind Children Division through the National Federation of the Blind. However, I am not speaking on their behalf and solely representing myself. My youngest of four is visually impaired and has a degenerative eye condition that will take most, if not all, of his vision. As a mom of a child with a disability, all I want is a safe, accessible community for him, as all parents want for their children. As a runner, I have become more aware of how using our crosswalks have become increasingly dangerous. We have a blind child sign in our neighborhood for my son and a speed bump in front of our house, and I would say more people than not drive over the speed limit down our street, as I have also witnessed through other neighborhoods as I am running. As it is now, my son cannot and will not, if things don't improve, access his community in the same way as many other children. As most parents of children with disabilities, I want to know my son's needs matter with candidates running for office. Without campaign finance reform, it makes it more difficult to know which candidates are taking large contributions from outside donors before receiving our mail-in ballots due to the finance reporting times. Campaign finance reform will help us know which candidates will take all residents' needs into account to make an accessible and inclusive community a priority and not the ones of large donors or special interests. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the next person?
Suzie Brundage, no address was provided. She should be able to unmute now.
Good evening, council. My name is Suzie Brundage, and like several others tonight, I'm here to discuss campaign finance reform. I would like to start out by respectfully expressing my disappointment in six of you. Last Friday, you received a letter asking for reform that was signed by dozens of residents. That's a significant amount of people, and yet six of you deemed it unimportant enough to completely ignore the letter. Regardless of what your thoughts are on the topic, or whether you even know anything about the topic, the residents who signed the letter deserve a simple acknowledgement that you at least received it. Interestingly, the council members who responded to the letter are those who did not win their offices by expecting, accepting thousands in special interest dollars or by being appointed by the well-connected that did. Those of you who accepted the money remain silenced. It makes me wonder whose interests you represent. City council has historically been a position in which ordinary residents step up to serve their communities. They didn't spend a lot of money on their campaigns, they didn't have big money behind them, they didn't have wealthy connections, and they didn't use the positions to springboard into bigger positions. The best person for the job won, and then they served and communicated with their community while they did it. Why would you not want this? Perhaps it's because the current system benefits you? I urge you to work with the bipartisan community members that want to see reform. At the very least, I respectfully ask that you respond to the email Thornton Voters for Fair Elections sent last week, especially since you have previously requested that we send emails on this topic. This is an important issue that deserves to be heard for your time.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the next person?
Lauren Turner, no address was provided.
Good evening, mayor, members of city council and staff. Campaign finance reform is a topic that continues to be relevant even here in the city of Thornton, as has been echoed by my fellow residents this evening. Numerous states and local governments have passed or are in the process of passing campaign finance reform. Many in attendance this evening probably know this, but it is worth a reminder that in 2002, Coloradans voted to get big money out of politics by passing an amendment regarding state-level campaigns that reduces contribution limits from $5,000 to $500 for governor, $1,500 to $200 for state senate, and $1,000 to $200 for state house races. It bans corporate and union contributions to candidates and political parties, lowers the contribution limit to political action committees, or PACs, from $25,000 a year to $500 per two-year cycle, and limits their contributions to candidates. Small donor committees for individual citizens to pool $50 contributions, and requires better disclosure of the funding sources of so-called "educational committees" that run attack ads about candidates. As Kate Mia shared, other cities in Colorado have already passed their own campaign finance reform, and it's time that Thornton followed suit. As the old adage goes, money talks, and when candidates receive money from large corporations and special interest groups, it would follow that those candidates feel compelled to then listen to those donating that money, even over the voices of those living in the city those candidates are meant to be representing. It's also critical that campaign contributions be disclosed in a timely fashion so that voters have an opportunity to see who might really be backing the candidates. Campaign finance reform is a path to greater transparency, increased fairness in our election process, and a means to strengthen the democratic process that we hold so dear. Campaign finance reform is a path to a better future for Thornton and its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Tracy Crispin, 9210 Clayton Street.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, so I am speaking on a couple of things. I'm not surprised that you have a number of people that are asking for transparency in the community on the way that money is being spent during campaigns because, I mean, we have now, we had a bully block of five, but now we have, you know, even more of you. So, which is what I'm going to talk about tonight. For me, I, we had a representative that represented our community, her name was Jackie Phillips, and I was proud to have her in the seat. And today, Eric, I'm going to tell you, I am not impressed with you. I am, you have done nothing for the city of Thornton. I don't really care about your work in the city of Denver. My family is one of the most well-known Latino families in the city of Denver. So I also was raised in the Jewish community, so I was very upset to hear when and during your speech during that you did nothing but talk about God. That is a, I mean, being raised in the Jewish community, that was an insult to me. So I hope that you will be able to separate your belief systems with your political belief systems because as a person raised in the Jewish community, I, you know, I don't want to hear about your Christian belief systems. So, and I am magically, like Jackie said, you guys voted for a Latino candidate. I find that, which is, that nobody knows about. I mean, Jen, Jessica, David, Adam, Tony, all of you, this was the most white-privileged move that you could possibly make. You used Eric as a token for the Latino, like you came in like a white savior to be like, oh, well, see, we put a Latino person in that. No, he is a token in your game. You do not get to use us Latinos as a token in your games for your white privilege. And I hope that Eric, although I have talked about him, I hope that he does truly care about the Latino community, and I hope that he does come ready to represent the community that he has been picked to serve, even though he is a token in the rest of your white-privileged game. I am completely disappointed, and I guess this from the moment that Jackie got removed, that you guys were going to have the, I have a person of color on the side, and you, I mean, you guys played exactly into the white-privileged cards that I thought you guys were. So once again, in trying to prove that you guys are not racist, you proved exactly how racist you are. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the next person?
Stephanie Hall, 926 Cheyenne Boulevard.
I don't have anything to say. I am just here for the lottery drawing at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Suzanne Cabral, no address was provided.
Good evening, council. I'm here to speak in support and strongly encourage the Thornton City Council to enact campaign finance reform. It's for transparency, democracy, empowering every Thornton resident's voice. Council representing the people. I read that only three council members responded to the email. It is disappointing that the other six did not reply. Six did not acknowledge the residents and are not addressing the letter. I would think that the council member who ran to represent Thornton as one would want this dialogue, would welcome a discussion, and would want to work together to create equitable representation, ensure transparency, and accountability. I am greatly concerned that the six who are ignoring the movement to enact campaign finance reform are doing so because they realize they would not be able to hold their seats if they were not being financed by special interest, that they fear that they would lose their power if they were required to be transparent and accountable to the citizens. If they realize that their seats and campaigns are not able to be bought by the industries, that expects their votes. A few years ago, the council voted unanimously to support a resolution that included prioritize people and the environment over profit. As a registered nurse, I am acutely aware of preventative and proactive practices. It is heartbreaking to see children suffer from asthma and other diseases because of the air quality and pollution in the communities they live and attend schools in. We need smart growth with a safe, clean environment, and it is clear that with your donations on record, you were in the pockets of developers and oil and gas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I believe that was the last person that was signed up. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak but didn't sign up, now is your opportunity and come up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. I am Joe Acker. I live at 1996 East 128th Avenue in Ward 4 with my family. My husband was born in Thornton, and I have been a resident for the past 12 years. My husband was born in Thornton, and I have been a resident for the past 12 years. I am also a special educator at a school in Thornton. I am here to speak tonight about campaign finance reform within the city of Thornton. Now, I know our city prides itself on many things, but now is the time for Thornton to become a leader in and model for campaign finance reform. Can you imagine if other cities looked to our model for campaign finance? We could be viewed as an innovative government that truly cares about our voters and the integrity of elections. Campaign finance reform in Thornton is vitally important so we can attract more campaign donors, qualify candidates, and have more local voters participate in elections and be educated about our political systems. I know the thought of an increased number of educated voters might be frightening for at least five of you on the current council. However, this isn't about you. Citizens and voters in Thornton deserve to know who is spending money to influence our elections. Citizens and voters in Thornton deserve earlier and more frequent campaign reporting. Citizens and voters in Thornton deserve to know the financial relationships between nonprofit organizations and candidates or elected officials. Tonight, Thornton citizens and voters also demand to know who is spending money to influence our elections. Tonight, we demand that organizations that spend money on elections have to disclose the source of that money. Tonight, we demand that advertisements list the top donors that funded them. Tonight, we demand that light be shed on the dark money that is buying our elections. Tonight, we demand reasonable contribution limits so we can limit the influence of money in our elections and increase the number of individual donors in Thornton. Tonight, we demand strong accountability for enforcement policies, so candidates must follow campaign finance rules. Tonight, we demand the creation of the public financing of campaigns so that all citizens in Thornton have equitable ability to contribute to those campaigns. Finally, I have some words for my fellow community members. I identify as a disabled woman. I identify as a teacher to your children. I identify as a wife to a black, highly decorated Navy veteran. I identify as a mom to two young black sons, one of whom has a significant physical disability. I identify as someone who loves my community and country, but mostly as someone who loves everyone in it. If you look closely, we are not that different. No matter what makes up your identity, it is clear that you and your family have a right to an equitable, informed vote. Campaign finance reform will ensure that right. At least five or six people sitting on the council have already said through their silence that they are not in favor of campaign finance reform in Thornton. I beg my fellow community members to ask themselves why. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak that didn't sign up? All right, if there's anyone online that wanted to speak that didn't sign up and has not spoken already, you can press the raise hand button, or if you're calling from a landline, you can press star 9 now.
To say thank you to everyone who came out to talk about campaign finance reform, you know, this is something, it's truly a nonpartisan issue. You know, people want a functioning, transparent, and trustworthy government, and campaign finance regulations is one way that we get that. You know, we all do really want a democracy where we all have a voice, and we want our elected officials to not be beholden to any particular special interests and to be held accountable to the voters. I am going to reiterate a lot of what people said. You know, a system dominated by big money and special interests produces an unrepresentative selection of wealthy and well-connected people running for office, and it leads to government politics that fail to reflect the needs of everyday people. This is especially heightened on the local level because local candidates generally raise less money than those running for state or federal office. And so what that means is that when there's a few large checks in a local election, it can have a much bigger impact on the outcome of that race and what candidates are able to do. So I wholeheartedly agree, and I put this in the letter that I responded to the over 55 residents that sent this letter, I wholeheartedly agree with everything that was said. Campaign finance reform would help increase accountability, it would expand transparency, and most importantly, it would help empower voters as they make decisions on who to elect to represent them. And this does have my full support. I do want to give some context to this for people that might be wondering, you know, this was brought up at last week's planning session, that, you know, I brought it up that this was something that residents were asking about, and, you know, I was asking if I could have consensus so that we could have staff kind of start investigating it so that we could be proactive and really work with residents to come up with a solution that would be, you know, amenable to everybody and really put the city on the right track for this. Unfortunately, there was not support to move that forward, but I'm hopeful I will continue to champion it as my role as a city councillor, and I hope that everybody here today also, you know, keeps working on this. You know, big change doesn't happen overnight. You know, it takes time to change the hearts and minds of people, and, you know, already the fact that 50 residents signed a letter, that's more than we get for a lot of things. So, you know, it's definitely, I think it's the start of a movement, and I think that's exciting. I think we can make some real change. So, that's it for me.
Councilmember Henson?
Well, good evening. I have heard from residents about code issues, and I'm happy that you're writing to me. Please continue always to reach out. I want to say thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. Rather than responding at the time, I just wanted to say thank you. I hear you, and I appreciate the 55 people who signed that letter regarding campaign finance. I think the time has come for, obviously, for a robust conversation. We don't often have a group of 55 people sign on to a letter and to address an issue like this. Having just come off a year ago, a year of full campaigning for this council seat, and having friends who ran in other cities, we, the time has come for this conversation. We are a little bit of the Wild West here in Thornton. I welcome the opportunity for a robust conversation about how we can make our city better, more democratic through addressing this issue. Thank you for your detailed, your detailed reporting in your comments and your, and your passion to make our city better. Another, speaking of another group of 50 people, Councilmember Bigelow is not here this evening. She was contacted by some residents who wanted to meet with her, and she-